Good evening. We'll get started again on our workshop, budget workshop. And I remind, since we've got a big group in here tonight, remind you to make sure you turn your cell phones off. Twenty-five-dollar penalty if it rings. And if it's a commissioner, it's 50.
I already called you.
Still on my account. Just keep it on there.
Yeah, we have problems collecting, so. But anyway, I'll turn it over to our county manager, Brian Alakut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, this is your service expansion workshop evening. As you'll recall, just to set the basis for everyone, after we do our planning session with the board early in late January, early February, unless there are requests that come from the board at that time, what we prepare for you in our recommended budget is a budget that continues the operations of the county at the same level at which it has been continued in the past. That's why we call it a continuation budget. Anything that is new or different, things like asking for additional funding, asking to be funded when you haven't been funded before, those are all things that we consider service expansions. That is why folks come separately to do that. That is a policy decision by this board to decide whether you want to fund those or whether you don't want to fund those. So we do not include them, and we do not make recommendations in the recommended budget regarding those. We allow the agencies and individuals, including the departments, who want to change things, to come to you and pitch that proposal to you individually. That way, you can ask them questions, and it doesn't put a slant on something. If I were to say to you, either if I were to put that in the recommended budget, or if I were to say to the board, I think that's a good idea, that kind of slants that a little bit. It's not what I am supposed to be doing as an administrator of the budget. My job is to present to you what you've asked for, and that is, what does it take to continue the budget in the next year doing the exact same thing? Anything new or different or changes come to you as a policymaker to determine whether you want to do that or not. So that's what we're doing tonight. So you will hear from department heads, whether they're pitching new ideas or requesting changes from above service levels of last year. You may even see some requests for decreasing service levels from last year. But that's what will be done tonight. I'll tee it up with the general fund that are general in nature to all departments, and then the individual departments will come and talk about theirs. And we have outside agencies who will also come in and speak about their requests. My understanding from the chairman is, obviously, you want to try to keep this pretty tight. You've got a pretty long list of folks. Is that a four-minute, five-minute, three-minute? What is that for? Just to set the expectation for outside agencies and for department heads.
I would say somewhere in the three to four minutes, and then we'll like questions. If a commissioner has a question that you cannot answer, then we'll share that with an email tomorrow. Is that fair enough? But we have, I think it's pretty close to 30. So if you try to go six minutes, I may cut you off.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'll start on page 289. These are the service expansion requests. As we showed you in the budget, at the very top, you'll see that there's an available fund balance of 2.3 that we identified as revenue over expenditures. And the first one, you'll see the page number, the department, the title, what the estimated cost is, if there are any revenue offsets associated with those programs, what the initial cost is, and we also want to show you, is there a recurring annual cost? So in some of these service expansions, it may be a one-time request, X dollars for one time. Also, it may be X dollars for one time in a recurring number every year. So we try to break that out for you and show you that, so that you get a full impact and understand all of it. So we hit pay study at last meeting, so I'll move on to what starts on page 292, which is an overall request for all county departments, an increase in the 401K contribution for non-LEO, non-law enforcement officials. You'll see that starting on page 292. As you remember, and we talked about this last year, general statutes require that the county and local governments provide 5% match to 401K. Not match, sorry. You are required, as a local government, to put in 5% to law enforcement officers' 401K. That is law. You have to do that. You are not required to do that for anybody else, but you are required to do it for LEOs. Our proposal, you have a program here now where you will match local employees who are not LEOs up to 2%. So if they put in 1%, you'll give them 1%. You'll match it 1%. If they put in 2%, you'll match it 2%. But you don't go any higher than 2%. So there's a delta of 3% between what you do for general government employees and what you do by statute for LEOs. Our proposal in this, as we proposed last year, is to match that, so that you're treating all employees the same. And you'll see that that recommendation is to say, if you contribute up to 5%, you'll be matched at that. So there is a little bit of difference. You're not completely just given that. You're requiring that non-law enforcement employees at least put something in, and you'll match them up to 5%. You're still required to put in 5% for every LEO, whether they put in a penny or not. So you'll see the cost there. It's $470 roughly for general fund, $38,000 for water, and $1.00, a little over $1,200 for solid waste. That is the proposal on that one for general fund and enterprise fund. Good for me to move on?
Yes.
Okay. So the next one is on page 293, employee dental insurance. As part of the MAP study, in looking at it, and the first time you did the salary study, they looked at benefits as well as market salaries, and they recommended changes to the benefit structure to try to be comparable with the market. They, again, will be doing that this year. We've seen their recommendation, and that is that we're probably one of the only local governments in this area that's not contributing to the dental insurance. So this is a request to include the cost of the county to pay for employee-only, just employee-only dental insurance. And you'll see the cost on that is $170,000 in general fund, $13,000 in water, and $225 in solid waste. Happy to move on if you have no question. Okay. So I think we pitched both of these last year, and we put them back out there again. So we'll move on now to DSS. Melanie's here to present that, and this is the signing bonus they have for the Master of Social Work program.
Tonight, we're presenting and requesting a $5,000 pay increase for our social workers when they have their Master's of Social Work degree. As you know, our social workers have a very demanding position that they hold within our agency. We struggle to retain these highly qualified social workers. So it is our hope that if we can offer them that additional $5,000, if they have that Master's degree, that we can retain some of these highly qualified individuals, because we have had trouble with the higher qualified social workers leaving and going to other agencies for more money. So it is our hope that we can retain them with this extra $5,000.
So what we're showing in our book, the net cost to the county will be $12,500?
Actually, for five.
For five.
And actually, right now, we're at four.
Okay. Thank you.
The presentation says a bonus. The bonus is a one-time event. You said a salary increase. Which is it?
Salary increase.
Not a bonus.
$5,000 on their current salary.
Well, the bonus is the wrong word to use.
In the narrative, it does say increase, but under purpose and justification. But the title had bonus. So we need to change that to increase.
When you have an existing employee that's deciding to have their Masters, are they compensated to get their Masters? I mean, do you pay for? I mean, they have to pay?
They're incurring that cost on their own.
Gotcha.
Cost and time. We do facilitate the internships, and they request to do the internship with our agency, but the cost is totally.
Any other? Okay. Well, good. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this doesn't pertain to the budget, but eventually it would. I've been hearing a lot of discussion at some DSSs across the nation, that there are a certain amount of people that are able-bodied and not working. We do know that illegals are getting paid, because they don't have to present proof of citizenship. But I do want to know, are all able-bodied people in Beaufort County required to work a minimum of 20 hours a week?
Which program are you referencing?
All of them.
So there are different requirements for the different public assistance programs, and it depends on which program, and it depends on, in that program, what the beneficiary is receiving. So for FMS, there is an able-bodied adult program that has been suspended during COVID, but that is getting ready to restart again July 1st. For work first, there are some requirements for parents with children. It just depends on the program. For Medicaid, there is not.
Well, COVID was over some time ago. I mean, it was even declared over by Biden, what, six months ago?
So I think the able-bodied adults that you're referring to, it is a policy in the Food and Nutrition Services Policy called the ABOD policy, able-bodied adults without dependents. So if they're between the ages of 18 and 49, due to the pandemic, you know, we have to go based by the policy that we're provided. And so even though, you know, some of the things have ended several months ago, this particular waiver for the able-bodied adults without dependents does go through June the 30th. So starting July 1, they will be able to receive, the policy starts back up, where they will be able to receive three months of Food and Nutrition Services. At the end of the three months, they will be required to either be working or volunteering 20 hours per week. If they are not at the end of the three months, they will no longer be able to continue to receive.
Volunteering, as in, you know, just that's kind of a job for them?
The policy states that they are able to volunteer. We do have to verify that they are doing and volunteering the 20 hours a week. So they're able to volunteer at any organization within the community, churches, but we do have to verify that they are volunteering at a reputable place where they do accept volunteers.
And this is not mothers or elderly. This is just able-bodied people without dependents.
Without dependents, yes.
And, yeah, I was under the impression that we had work first in Beaufort County, at least at the state level. I know that it was ended on the federal level during Obama, when he was running for office that second time. But I was thinking, we still had it, but it almost seems like COVID circumvented the whole work-first program, did it not?
So currently, we have four work-first family assistance employment services cases. The rest of our cases are approximately 50 cases, and they are the child-only cases, where you have a grandparent receiving for a grandchild, or, you know, that situation. But right now, we only have four employment services cases for workers.
All right. Thank you, Amy. We'll take one more question from another commissioner, if it's related to the Master's degree increase.
Can you tell us what the surrounding counties are with regard to this Master's degree?
What, whether or not they pay the additional $5,000?
We had heard there was one surrounding county that did it. When we went back to verify, we have been told they are not doing it, but we don't know if they're having the same issue we're having with maintaining them. So we've been told that they did, but then.
But they would likely all be at the same pay scale, right?
Every county has a different pay scale.
Okay.
So it would be up to the county to decide whether they wanted to compensate additional for it.
You want to go into the income maintenance case worker?
So, Mr. Chairman, real quick, and I apologize for stepping in. I said I wouldn't do that, but just because DSS might not be aware, countywide, there is a policy in place for the sheriff's office that this board approved, it was before I got here, where if there's a law enforcement officer who comes on board, and they have an associate's degree, there's a $2,000 bonus that's attached to it, salary increase attached to it. And if they hold an associate's degree, there's a $4,000 salary increase that's attached to it. So just so the board knew that. I think you all were aware of that, but I wanted to make sure that you knew that there was an existing piece in place. Thank you.
You ready?
Okay. So our next item is our request for four additional income maintenance case worker two positions. As you all have heard us talk about several times, we are getting ready to go through Medicaid transformation. And so these positions will be primarily responsible for processing applications, recertifications, and changes in circumstances for our Medicaid recipients. And due to this expected increase, that's why we are requesting these, the increase related to Medicaid expansion is why we are requesting these positions. And they will be funded 100% through fiscal year '26, '27. After that, it would go back to approximately 75% funded. 25% would be county money after fiscal year '26, '27.
Questions on that?
How soon is this going to go into effect? When would you probably be looking at your first case coming in?
So the Medicaid expansion has passed, but it's tied to the passage of the state budget. So I don't know the answer to that question. I know they're supposed to be conferencing this week on it. But the expansion itself has passed, but it has not passed, it won't pass officially until the state budget just passed. That could be next month. They could, you know, you just don't know the timeframe.
Other questions? Okay. You want to go to your next item?
Our final request for service expansion is an additional income maintenance three case worker position. This position would be used to ensure the quality assurance for all of our income maintenance programs. As you all know, we face multiple audits and monitorings each year, so this position would allow us, or allow them, to focus more on that, so that we can make sure we are where we need to be and provide quality assurance for all of our cases across all of the income maintenance programs. This position would be reimbursed at about 50%. So the total cost of the expansion would be about $34,000.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next one is animal control with a spay and neuter, a dog spay and neuter program.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So coming before you today with a request to assist an initiative on the dog side of our population at the animal control shelter. As you recall, last year, as a board, you graciously allocated $10,000 to the Humane Society to assist them in a spay and neuter program targeting cats. As we review just the data and intakes for this year, we're finding some trends that we consider to be headed in the right direction. So, for example, when we compare this year, which is currently under the spay and neuter program, compared to last year, our number of intake of cats actually decreased by about a half a percent. So we have taken in less cats in 2022 than we did in 2021. However, when we look at dogs, our intake of dogs increased by 25%. So the biggest difference between those two operations is this extra support on a spay and neuter program. We would like to implement a similar initiative on the dog side of the house to help control that population and ultimately potentially reduce the intakes that we have on dogs. So that's what the $10,000 would be going toward. Yes, sir.
John?
How are you funding the cats right now? Or are you not doing it?
I'm not.
Funding the spay and neutering of cats right now, or are you not doing?
So that was an allocation from the commissioners to the Humane Society for $10,000 for that program.
Right. So that was last year, right?
That's.
Yes, sir. That was last year. The society is totally different, so everything they do is through fundraisers, is a different entity. So you gave them the $10,000, that was to assist with the money they already had raised.
Brian, it's in your budget.
Yes, sir. It was put in the budget last year. Yes, the additional $10,000 that was put in the budget last year by the board as a service expansion is in the continuation budget.
It's in there.
Once it makes it into the budget, it stays in there as a continuation item unless it gets pulled by the board.
So your request is an additional 10 for dogs?
Additional 10 for dogs, and that would be managed by us at Animal Control.
And that's based on the numbers that we saw change because of doing that?
That's correct. We have seen a positive change in a reduction of intakes for cats. We attribute that to the support that the commissioners have given to that spay and neuter program. We would love to see if it makes a difference on the dog side, and we have no reason to believe that it would.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you.
We're good.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is one that I've got as well. This is court facilities. Starts on page 300, it is on page 300. As you're aware, we have a contract with Allied Universal to provide courthouse security. We are on a contract with them. That contract has a multiplier of 3% each year. I had a request from Allied Universal to ask the board if they would consider making that an additional 2% on top of that for a 5% increase for their employees due to inflation. So we told them, we put that in there, but the cost of that, the additional 2% on top of the 3, that's the annual increase, is $3,432. So just want to, yes, sir, question?
Is that contract up in one more year, or do you know?
I think it was a three-year contract when we signed it last time, so it's a multi-year contract, but I think it's three years. Now, there's an out, if you want to get out of it. We have the ability to get out, but I believe it's a three-year contract.
Because the sheriff indicated he was going to want to take that over.
If the sheriff wanted to take that over, then he would be asking you, I think, for additional debuts to cover that. So, and I don't see that in this year's budget as a service expansion.
All right. Any questions of Brian? Okay, Brian?
On to emergency medical services for a peak time transport truck.
Good evening again. So continuing with the theme of just data analysis and some trends that we're seeing in the county, EMS provision in the Blunts Creek area is an area that we are seeing an increase in EMS calls for that particular district. As you recall, that area right now is currently served by a QRV, so a paramedic in an SUV who can go and render some additional response, but cannot transport. We're relying on outside transports from Chaco Winnity or Aurora to that area. Depending on which direction that's coming from, you're looking at a 12-to-15-mile travel time at best for some of those locations. As you get into that waterfront area, which is where the majority of homes are in the Blunts Creek section, it's a little longer. Now I hit the three-minute?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
All right.
You get three more.
There are several options that we have looked at in providing coverage for a peak time truck. We know that the majority of our calls across the county, particularly in the Blunts Creek area, are occurring between 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. About 70% of our calls in general occur during that time. And that's also the time that the deficit of our other supporting agencies, like our volunteer fire departments, are struggling with staffing. So when we have calls during 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, we're particularly vulnerable to having a quick response and an adequate response. And we are seeing a trend in that area with an increasing call volume for Blunts Creek, where we are quickly approaching the call levels that other areas of the county have that are being served by a transport truck. The options that are before you now are various different staffing options that we have looked at and analyzed. We recommend the option that would allow us to hire one additional EMS employee, use that during the daytime, so we would take our QRV out of service, we would put them on an ambulance with this new employee, they would run calls 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, and after 5:00, if we have vacation spots in the area that need to be filled, we would break that up. If we're fully staffed, that truck would remain in service. And I know that's a lot. I'm trying to keep it to three minutes. We'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Yes. Ed?
I see you got operational cost $51,165, and then you got capital costs of $60,000. What's driving the capital cost?
Capital cost would be items such as, we have a spare ambulance right now that we would need to update the stretcher in the bracket that that stretcher fits into the truck to be, I guess, equal to what our other units are. It's really a safety mechanism. The power load systems that we have now minimize the amount of weight a provider has to pick up. So these stretchers alone weigh about 80 pounds, they're around 120. By the time you put your equipment on it, plus you throw a 200-pound patient on it, you now have two providers that are picking up 300 pounds. And we know through looking at workplace injuries in the past, back injuries are an issue. And these types of equipment help eliminate that.
You were talking about using a QRV.
Yes, sir.
Why would you, if you can use the QRV to expedite time, why would you need to outfit this capital cost of $60,000? I mean, that would be on the truck to pick them up, right?
That's correct.
So why would you, if you can use the QRV to cut the time, why would you need to put this extra cost on this? You can't put it on the QRV.
That's correct. We would, if we implement this peak time truck, it would be a transport ambulance, a two-person transport ambulance. So that QRV would not be running while this truck is staffed. Yeah. I'm sorry about that.
But the county approved several years ago for the town of Chaco Winnity, or the Chaco Winnity EMS, to make transports as opposed to emergency services. So why don't we, if you're that busy, why doesn't, why don't we disapprove Chaco Winnity doing transports, and they can provide this service at no additional cost to the county?
I think those would be decisions made by policymakers. I can't deny that, but we'd be happy to entertain that conversation later.
Actually, what this is, is a subsidy to the Chaco Winnity EMS. And with the problems that they've had over there with the fraud investigation, et cetera, et cetera, this just doesn't look like something we should be doing.
It subsidize, this would help subsidize actually Chaco Winnity and Aurora, because right now Aurora and Chaco Winnity split the Blunts Creek district. So there are areas beyond Blunts Creek Fire Department that Aurora responds primarily to, and areas on this side that Chaco Winnity responds to.
Well, the subsidy comes in allowing Chaco Winnity to collect for transports during this period.
For non-emergency transports.
That's right. Non-emergency transports, when we have that service as provided by other providers in the county already. So this looks to me like something that we should look at.
Any other question? One of the things I'd like staff, are you able to pull and give us the amount of tax that's collected by Aurora and also Chaco Winnity that relates to the taxes that are collected in Blunts Creek?
Yes, we can tell you the taxes, or, no, they're not taxes, well, the tax on the EMS district that's collected. Yes, we can tell you those.
Okay.
There is a, there is some funding that they provide that crosses over. Is that not correct?
Yes, so the tax districts for EMS do not mirror fire. On the south side, you have three fire districts, but you have two EMS districts. So I guess to answer your question, could we take known variables from the fireside and give you a pretty good estimate of if you have three EMS tax districts on the south side?
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
I think we could probably get you pretty close on that.
Yes, so you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we started a GIS project where we sat down with the rescue chiefs and the fire chiefs and identified the districts on GIS so that we would know parcel by parcel. Previously, it was a drawing line on a map, and we really didn't have clear delineation on that. So that has been done, and we're able to do that, so we can break that out.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, this ambulance would be a county ambulance with county employees?
Well, depending on what option, the commissioners should decide. There is one option in which we could partner with an Aurora or Chaco Winnity to provide that additional person. So obviously, pros and cons operationally from that, but depending on what option you as a board elected to do, they would be county employees, or we could pursue, if there's a willingness, to do some type of partnership.
Hate to keep beating on this horse.
You did.
But if you're trying to expedite time, how would you expedite time if you're partnering with someone, Chaco Winnity, I mean?
So essentially, what that would look like is during the day, we would take the person who's normally driving that QRV, and we would put them on the ambulance. And then either Chaco Winnity or Aurora would send a second person, so we now have two people on the ambulance. And they're able to respond to a call as fast as our QRV would, but also be able to transport, so you're not tying up a unit from a Chaco Winnity or from an Aurora to provide that service.
So are you pulling a personnel from Aurora to this QRV site?
If we... If we, if the, as a board, if you elect to explore the partnership aspect, then yes.
So, what happens then if something happened in Aurora, and your man is in Blunts Creek or Chalkawinity?
So, it would be an additional staffed position for those partnerships. Their truck's still in service. Under a partnership concept, it would be that spirit of, we're going to keep our truck in service and help you by staffing this other truck. So, pros and cons of that. Just real quickly, the con on that would be the consistency of staffing. It's very hard to find paramedics right now, or any provider. I say paramedic, but any provider. That is a very competitive market. And when you look at agencies like Aurora and Chalkawinity, they rely a lot on part-time employees. Those are hard to come across. So, this may be one of those positions where we entered this conversation months ago, and there was a willingness to help. They may not be able to and still staff their trucks consistently. Those are all things we would have to engage in in conversations.
Let's get to your next item.
I got one question.
Okay.
Out of the four options, what's your favorite?
The most consistent operationally would be option two, and that's us hiring an additional employee. That gives us the benefit of a more consistent staffing model. We're not impacting these other agencies to help us with that. That would be our recommendation. Yes, sir. All right. On to number two. Again, back on EMS, as you all are aware, we have 32 full-time employees. We operate 24-hour shifts with eight providers on each shift. So, the crew that is working today will work 24 hours off the next three days and repeat. Because we are staffed at a minimum level, anytime we have someone on vacation, someone out sick, or vacancies, that is an immediate impact to our budget, either in overtime or part-time. And there's always this balance, where are you cheaper to continue to utilize overtime and part-time versus hiring a full-time position? As we look at the trend over the last two years, we are quickly approaching that tipping point. Our fear is, as we go into this year, we will meet it or exceed it based on the history we're seeing and the time it takes for us to fill positions now. So, under this proposal, we're bringing before you the ability to add one more full-time position to each of our shifts. That helps us cover these vacancies and helps us manage to a greater degree of stability our overtime and part-time impacts. When we look back over the last two years, when you look at the fiscal year '21, '22, we averaged one person out per day. Actually, if you do the geeky statistic stuff, it's 1.09%. This year, we've been plagued with longer vacancies and with more employee injuries, which had people on light duty. We've now increased that to about 1.3. There are, any given time during the month, there are eight or nine days in which we have two employees off for each shift.
We're using light duty?
Sir?
We're using light duty for injured employees?
When it is allowable for us to do so, we do find practices to utilize them in that capacity. Yes. Some instances, for example, have been on our inventory side, making sure our truck checks, our truck lists are up to date. All of our stocks are currently in stock on the computer as it should be, helping us order supplies, doing general administrative stuff, updating policy and procedure copies in stations and various things like that. It doesn't happen often, because a lot of the times, the restrictions from these employees don't allow us to do that. But when we have the opportunity to do so, it's to our benefit to do that.
Yes, sir.
Randy? Where do you find the most success in recruiting?
Locals.
Port of mouth?
Yes.
Port of mouth?
We have found our most, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, our most success in recruitment lately has been the local provider, who we've been able to get in on a part-time basis and let them work in our system, and then transitioning them to an interest of full-time from there. The locals are where we find the best recruitment and the best retention.
Is one of the options, instead of doing four, we employ two, and we go to the numbers that you threw out in the previous presentation. 70% of our calls are between 8:00 in the morning and 8:00 at night?
Yes. 8:00 to 5:00 is about 70% of our calls. When you jump?
But they're working 12-hour shifts?
Working 24-hour shifts.
Straight 24 hours?
Straight 24. Yes, sir. I see where you were going with the two-person. Could we compromise in those peak areas? It would be difficult.
You're projecting that we reduce the overtime by 60,000. Would it not be more than that? You know, we got 360,000 in the overtime budget.
So, it would be, the variable that we can't predict, and the reason why we didn't put it in firm numbers is this, is we never know, I don't have the crystal ball to say when we're going to have two vacancies or three. So, for example, prior to the last two weeks, we were down three positions, and that's a bigger impact when you're having to fill that. So, if it were equal, I would say, yeah, we would have more of a cost savings. But we can never predict the workplace injuries, the vacancies that take us so long to fill. The positions we've got open right now, we've had open for 12 weeks. We have a position right now I haven't been able to fill.
On the part-time budget item, there's 91,000.
That's correct.
And you didn't allow any drop in that. Is that your best guess?
It would be our best guess, because we always try to use part-time first. Whenever we're filling these vacancies, and we know, if you requested vacation two weeks from now, we are immediately hitting our part-timers. Can you work this day? Because it's less of a budgetary impact for us to do so. So, that's why you didn't see the reduction in part-time. We prioritize part-time in that to reduce the cost.
Other questions? Well, I just tell you again, overall, a lot of what's costing the county money is allowing Chalkawinity to use these people to make money when we're out paying all this overtime. This is false economy. Commissioners need to stop that. That's at least two of your people right there that you're talking about. Any other question as it relates to the EMS?
I know us a lot. I appreciate your time. If you have any more questions, just know us now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I would encourage any of the commissioners, if you have questions, send them to Brian, and we'll try to get the answer before our discussion tomorrow night.
On page 309, Public Works Maintenance Technician Position.
Good evening, Commissioners. The service expansion that I'm presenting this evening is for the Public Works Department, the Facilities Division. It is for an additional personnel, a maintenance technician. Due to the increased amount of work orders and the need to accomplish tasks in-house, and the success that we've had recently doing work items in-house, a new maintenance technician position is requested. The new maintenance technician would be tasked with performing the same duties as the current technician. This person would be able to respond to all types of work order requests, including electrical, general, HVAC, as well as janitorial if needed. By having a fourth person in the Facilities Division, one person could respond to on-call or slash immediate need requests, while allowing a two-person crew to continue working on other major project activities. Also, this would allow the division to set up a rotation on-call schedule so that each person would only be on-call one week a month. As you all know, we service 19 buildings for the county, and that includes the Beaufort County Detention Center, which is obviously occupied 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, our maintenance technicians, as well as our maintenance supervisor, they work 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday. But again, someone has to cover the additional hours, the evening hours, the holidays, as well as the weekends. And I can assure you that things still break over the weekends. That's when we get called in. But again, for those of you that have spent a number of years on the board, you understand that the Facilities Maintenance Department has gone through changes, where things were done in-house, where there was a much larger staff, and then there were changes made where things were subcontracted out, and we're trying to find that happy medium. What we've discovered is the people that are currently in the Facilities Division are very talented, and they're able to accomplish a lot during the hours that they're here. I think when you look around at the buildings, you can see that, the changes that are being done. But it is very difficult to have a one-man crew doing a lot of work for safety purposes. When you have someone on the ladder, you need to have one person up on the ladder, another person holding, that type of thing. What we're currently running into is if there's a project that's going on like that, replacing a ballast or replacing the bulbs, doing anything, a more major project of drywall painting, but then the courthouse calls and there's a toilet that's overflowing. So, then one of the people that's there working on that project has to leave and go and respond to that. So, again, this would help to supplement that. The number of work orders that we are completing is averaging about 92 a month. So, again, that's over 1,000 work orders a year. Could be everything from replacing a bulb in a fixture to HVAC unit that's down. So, our maintenance supervisor handles most of the maintenance calls with HVAC with a contractor, so managing all of that. The numbers that are presented here has 52,000 for personnel. That would include the salary as well as the benefits. That's based upon our current pay plan. Operational, we're getting additional 1,500, looking for additional miscellaneous tools, cell phones, uniforms, safety equipment. The capital outlay is $2,000 for a computer. So, that's a total expense of $55,500. You do see that there is not any revenue shown to offset those costs, but I do anticipate having an additional maintenance technician would allow some of the other tasks that we currently subcontracted out to be performed in-house. But I know better than to claim some type of revenue that would just be pulling it out of the airside. But again, to have 19 buildings and over 200,000 square foot of heated and conditioned space to be maintained by limited staff, that's why I'm requesting an additional maintenance technician. Any questions?
We've got three now?
We have a supervisor and two technicians.
And there's a technician at the DSS. Do you count that one?
No.
Well, there is one there.
There, no, that's not a maintenance, that's a housekeeping, janitorial service company.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, your next one's on page 310. It's a longevity request for a corporate extension.
They have everything in front of them, I'm assuming.
You want me to tee it up?
Yeah.
So, Rod's here to answer any questions you have. But as you'll recall, in 2021, the board instituted longevity policy. And that longevity policy, at the time, excluded entities that were shared entities, as it looked at, the entity that provided that would be the one responsible for. So, we have shared agreements with NC State under corporate extension. Previously, when longevity was offered by the county many, many years ago, there was a sharing of that longevity, where NC State provided some longevity related to NC State employees, and the shared employees, the county provided longevity based on their county salary. Again, in 2021, when you put that program back in place, you excluded that. Corporate extension director is asking you to look at that and bring that back in. You'll see the number is $3,073 for their support staff. Now, Rod can explain the difference in NC State employees and support staff employees and how they're treated.
Yeah. For some reason, the support staff, and we have two in our office, one is currently filled, the other one will begin, actually is vacant, but will start on Thursday, June 1. Those two positions are allowed to participate in the state longevity program, only on, but that is funded on the state portion of their salary, which in this case, for us, for our office, those two positions are 75% county, 25% state-funded. The county then is given the option to participate in that or not. Now, for the other three positions, Louise Hensley, our FCS agent, our 4-H agent, Chastity Woodkovich, and me, we are completely exempt. The university is exempted from that, paying longevity, so we get nothing. And that's, because we had that in the past, we wanted to come back and ask again if y'all would consider including us in your program and your longevity plan.
Is there any chance NC State will reconsider?
No. I don't understand the ins and outs of that, but it has something to do with the university employees. It might have something to do with EHR exempt from the State Human Resource Act. I'm not sure about that. But our classification, the agents are different from the support staff. They are, they operate under that Human Resource Act. I'm wondering if that's part of it, and it's just the way the agents and even faculty members on campus are classified, that they are not able to participate in that. I'm not sure why, but that's my best guess on that. And I've been told that was, yeah.
Is there another county that, to your knowledge, is having the same problem?
Yes. So, this is the case for all extension employees across the state.
All counties doing it, or any other counties?
Some counties, yes. Some counties do include their extension employees. And if they have their own plan in the county, they do, they're given, I mean, not all of them do, but I know some do. Hyde County is one that actually does. I'm not sure about a lot of the others, but I do know that some of them do. It's kind of a mixed bag in that. Counties have the option, obviously. I mean, it's nothing to do with the state, but that does, that does happen.
The figure that we have here, does that affect all five employees or just the three?
The way I understand it, yes. I guess that would, short answer would be all five, yes. We're at various stages of the game, obviously, in terms of being, coming into it, the way it's set up five years before you.
Right. So, as the board recalls, there was a five-year lookback, as far as you could go. So, that was as far as you would go, but it is on a five-year increment, so.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
So, starting on page 311, Board of Elections, and Kelly's here. She has three of those items for you. Run through 311 to 316.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I appear tonight before you as a representative of the Board of Elections. Unlike other department heads, I have a board similar to you and operate similar to the county manager. So, all of these service expansion requests have been discussed in open meetings with our five-member board, and were recommended by them for me to take before you tonight. So, of those three, most have to do with salary, or all three of them have to do with salaries. The first particular request has to do with the salary of the director and the deputy director positions with the Beaufort County Board of Elections. I'm not going to get into the details. It's in front of you. If you have any questions about that, I will say that this does not change the scale of these positions. So, if these positions were to quit tomorrow, it would not affect the hiring of someone that comes in. But they were concerned about where these positions were on the scale as far as years of service were concerned. So, we're talking about 25 years of service and 22 years of service. The deputy director position is at 22 years this year and is not at mid-grade or midpoint yet. So, their request is before you. If you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions of Kelly?
Deputy Director's Anita, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Now, move on to the second, if you would like me, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. The second, we have it listed as operational, actually increases the amount of pay for precinct officials. Just to remind you, we do not hire, well, we do hire precinct officials, but the chief judge, judges, and assistants in each one of the 21 precincts that we have are recommended to us by each one of the political parties in Beaufort County. So, those names will come to us this summer. If we receive them from the political parties, then by law, we are obliged to appoint those folks. So, the parties are appointing or giving us the names of those folks. It's a bipartisan, we make sure that they're equally represented in the precincts. And it's the amount of pay per election for those particular people that are working on Election Day. There's the chief judge, who does have a little bit of a harder job to do, well, a lot of bit of harder job to do. They all go through training. They have to attend a training. They all go through training, they have to attend to training each election. The chief judge does come the day before, picks up supplies and ballots and stuff like that, and then oversees the precinct on Election Day, and then also has to come in on Election Night and bring that, all of that stuff back to us. So the difference between the positions is because that chief judge has a lot more duties and a lot more time invested in what they're doing. So we're looking to raise them, I think it's around $50 per position.
And you're projecting the total, I think, is $5,250?
Per election, if we're totally, if we've got everybody there. We're having a really hard time finding poll workers because it's a political thing. Y'all may have dealt with us calling you saying we need Republicans, we need Democrats, and we're calling the night before because people are calling in and saying they can't work. So we're having a really hard time. The minimum amount is three that we can have in a precinct, and we actually did have one precinct last fall. Two people didn't show up on Election morning. So we're trying to look at ways to get more interest in serving on Election Day because a lot of them will work the first time and come in and say, it's just not worth it because it's a long day. They're there no later than six and they're there until 8:30 at night, plus the training. Then the chief judges are coming in and out. The chief judges are sometimes midnight. Y'all have been there on Election Night when they're bringing them in. So we're trying to find ways of retaining good people to come in and work for us because these are the people that are counting the ballots on Election Day. So we're trying to give them an incentive to try and get more people involved in the process.
Any questions additional? You want to move to the next?
Yep. Next one is similar in the fact that we are requesting that the hourly pay rate for one-stop officials go from $11 to $14. If y'all are familiar with that, also, one-stop is our early vote, in-person voting. We do have sites, satellite sites in Bellhaven and Aurora and Chaco Innity, and then also at the office. We have seen a trend where we're having more people vote early than we are on Election Day, and these are the folks that are checking people in. And again, we're having a very hard time trying to find people that will come in and work for us to do that. And it's two and a half weeks, so it's hard to find people that'll come in for here and there. And we would like to request an increase in the hourly rate, see if we can't retain some people and get more people interested in it.
Questions? You did 15 minutes and five, that was.
Short and sweet, to the point.
You did, you did good.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
So next item, next item starts on page 317 is Communications. Looking around, I don't see anyone from the Sheriff's Office. But on page 317, they've made a request for three additional telecommunicated positions. That is a request of 176, 214, and that is a recurring annual cost. So you can certainly read that. We can answer maybe a question or two, if you have any, or I would defer to the Sheriff's Office.
I guess my question is very similar to, on the EMS side, they're asking for four, well, asking for three. Is, would it take two, one and a half to fill the slot from 7:00 to 7:00 or 8:00 to 8:00? Are they 12-hour shifts?
They are working 12-hour shifts, yes, sir. And so roughly, if you look at what EMS is doing, I mean, they have additional calls for service beyond EMS and fire, but in general, you would anticipate that their peak call volume is kind of like EMS, 7:00 to 7:00, 8:00 to 8:00, with it slowing down in the evening. But I can't tell you that specifically because I don't have those numbers.
Franky?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when you get a chance to talk to the sheriff, I would love to know the same question I asked earlier. I mean, I can understand your call volume from 7:00 to 7:00, but from 1:30 to 3 o'clock in the morning, most people going to bed somewhere. I want to know why you need that extra person. And if his numbers show that, I want to see that also.
Sure. And I think they explained some of that in there, where they talk about vacation, sick time, those kinds of things they're trying to pick up, as well as the additional, and I know this board is well aware of, emergency medical dispatch, where they are, when someone dials 911, it's no longer just, where's your emergency? Okay, fine, we hang up, we're sending somebody. They're doing instructions to people, they're instructing them on how to stop bleeding, how to do CPR, those kinds of things. So it does tie up that telecommunicator for a while, and I think that's part of what they're saying that would help them in doing it.
And I understand that. I mean, but I still want to see the numbers. I find it hard to believe that 3 o'clock in the morning, I mean, that the volume is like 7 o'clock in the day. And if you need to put two people on that first shift to cover that, but 3 o'clock in the morning, the telecommunicator is probably the only one awake.
So I'm sorry I can't answer those questions for you. I'm happy to pass that on to the sheriffs.
I want to see the numbers.
Yes, sir.
And if it justifies, I mean, I'm all for it.
Well, it takes, what is it, four and a quarter employees to do one position 24/7? So if we had two, we could at least fill and cover the peak times where they really need help.
Again, I'm a little hesitant to speak for the sheriff regarding his operations.
Well, I asked him tomorrow.
Other questions? John?
In 2021, they were allocated 18 people in Communications. Now we're down to 13?
The Sheriff's Office under the previous administration moved them rots. They did move some people, which they have, which the sheriff under statute has the ability to do.
Right.
You give, as a board commissioners, you allocate to them a total number of FTEs.
Right.
And the sheriff has the ability to do with those how he pleases.
So he could also move people back?
He could.
The sheriff could.
He could.
Okay.
Other questions? All right.
So the next begins, the outside agencies, the Town of Bath Recreation. They're requesting an additional $2,000 in funds, and I'm not sure if anybody from Bath is here. There he is.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for the opportunity to come here tonight and speak. My name is Darrell Norris. I'm the president of the Bath Recreation Department. We're a nonprofit organization that works closely with Bath Elementary School and use of their fields to put on a recreation program for the Bath area and surrounding areas. This past year, this past, this current spring that we're in right now, we've had 181 baseball, softball, and T-ball kids enrolled in our program, and that's continuing to grow year after year. We also do a volleyball program that had last year 48 young ladies in that. These ages are from ages four through 15. We provide these services for programs. We maintain the fields there at the Bath Elementary School. With the exception of the middle school baseball field and mowing of the middle school softball field, the other three fields that are there and all of the maintenance outside of the fence, the Bath Recreation Department takes care of. This is mowing, it's field lining, dragging, all of those type of things, trash removal. We've been working on a capital improvements program, essentially making improvements to the school grounds. We have equipment as our organization, we have equipment that lets us put on the programs, but the facilities themselves are owned by the school system. But we still, as a community, want to see those fields improved and things that can help provide us with a better program. Things like press boxes, PA systems, bleachers, and drainage improvements to the field. We've made quite a few of these improvements over the last year, but we certainly have a lot of ways to go making these improvements. Right now, when we get rain like we had the last couple of days, that softball field looks like a lake for two or three days, and that severely hampers our ability to play. Our back two fields are not lit. We have ultimate goal to get to putting lights on those back two fields so we can double our capacity to have games and bring folks in. Couple of other things I'd like to note. Next year, we will be hosting the Babe Ruth District Tournament for softball with teams from Washington, Jamesville, Bath, Bellhaven, Chaco Innity, and Pecosin all coming to play in Bath. Washington held it this last year, Jamesville will hold it this year, and Bath will get it next year. We anticipate a lot of people there. We had a big opening day event and just lots of exciting things. One thing new for us this year, we had a daddy-daughter dance held at the school and had over 200 fathers and daughters there attending that event. We hope to make that an annual thing. And just looking at our numbers to give you some idea, we're all volunteers, everybody except the umpires are volunteers, and umpires is one of our major expenses. So we are always looking for ways that we can cover those expenses, field maintenance, trash, equipments, umpires, our registration fees that we charge our participants, they cover our insurance and charter fees. We also get corporate sponsors for each team, that covers their uniforms. But all of the other program expenses to run that program are dependent upon the county's contribution and other fundraisers that we do with corporate sponsors and our concession stand. And so I asked for a modest increase this year of an additional $2,000. We intend to put that towards additional capital improvement programs for batting cages and drainage improvements on those fields. And I thank you for your time. You have any questions?
Any question? John?
Yes, sir.
Of the 181 kids you had enrolled, how many are within the city limits, do you know? Are residents of Bath? How many are residents of the county outside?
Outside of the city limits of Bath? I don't have those specific numbers, but I would say, if I were to guess, I would say 90% live outside of the city limits of Bath. City limits of Bath is a pretty small area.
Right, okay. So most, the majority of them are county residents?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Pretty much the same thing that we see in every location.
Sure, sure.
Other questions? Thank you, Darrell.
So Mr. Chairman, real quick, let me ask a question. We want to make sure we were clear on it. Was this, were you requesting this be recurring $2,000 or a one-time capital increase?
Well, to be honest, I would most likely ask for it again next year as well. We will have additional capital projects that we'll be asking for it.
When we saw it as an equipment or capital purchase, we showed it as a one-time request, but you would rather that be an ongoing request?
I would.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So on 320 is the Town of Bellhaven, their Recreation Department, I mean, I'm sorry. Yep, Bellhaven. Anybody from Bellhaven here? Okay. So on 320, you'll see that they've requested an additional funding beyond their current level of $10,800 for football equipment, indoor bleachers, and basketball court improvements. That shows a capital of $9,200. We have shown that as a one-time cost and assume that's what that is, and that's how we listed it. So unless, since they're not here, I don't know that we can adjust that. So the next item starts on page 321, that's the Town of Chaco Innity Recreation. There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Scarlett Stokes. I'm the treasurer of the Chaco Innity Recreation Department, and I'm here on behalf of the Town of Chaco Innity because the request is an additional for lights only. This is just to cover the current power bill for the town. It's not for any request for anything for the Chaco Innity Rec Department. The town pays the electric bill yearly, and this year with our increased number of games that we have and co-ed softball increasing throughout the year, carrying on into November, there's really only about two months out of the year that we don't have programs going on on the field. And as my electric bill with Duke Energy increased considerably this year on the South Side of the River, I don't know about over here, but on the South Side of the River, my increase was very large. So they're requesting additional funds just to pay the electric bill for the recreation deals.
Questions of Scarlett? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
So on page 322 is the Aurora Fossil Museum. There you go.
Thank you for letting me talk to you for just a few minutes of your time. I just want to share an update on the security cameras that you helped fund. We got the learning center all wired and everything, the cameras are on, and we want to have the main museum wired and live hopefully by the end of June. They had a supply chain issue with the equipment and things, but then we're hoping, we're working with ACS, and we're going to try to connect with the Sheriff's Department so that the Sheriff's Department can pull the live feed from outside, from our external cameras. So I think it'll be a great thing for Aurora, for the museum, and for the Sheriff's Department to help with security. The past five days have been crazy. We had to postpone the North Carolina Fossil Festival. We were doing a rain or shine event, but then it turned into gale and floods, so kind of had to postpone it. We're going to be holding it June 24th and 25th, so four weeks away, we'll put on another, hopefully, big party again. We had a lot of visitors here over the weekend that came from Oregon and Minnesota, so we had some fossil material ready and open for them. But the 24th and 25th of June is the postponed date for the North Carolina Fossil Festival. I'd like to thank Commissioner Repolds for coming out to our Veterans Breakfast yesterday and speaking. I heard that was a nice speech, and we appreciate you doing that for us. And the ask was for additional funds to hire some security during our big events. We, our brand and the museum and the Aurora Fossil Museum has grown over the years. Last year's reach was at least 1.7 million people. We have a lot of people coming, a lot of interests who turn into higher-profile museum, and our open access configuration right now, we do need extra security. Our event last year had 15,000 people, and we're hoping 2024 will have 20,000, if not more. And so we'll need more funding for our security, our off-duty sheriffs, deputies, and also our fossil day in the fall. So if you guys could consider it to help offset some of the costs of the security for our big events, we greatly appreciate it. Any questions?
Anybody have a question? We're good?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Here's Chairman, just real quick on that, on your line item, we actually had a slight mistake on that one. They currently receive $8,000, they're requesting an additional two. We actually showed it as a request for eight, sorry. So go scratch that eight, show it as two. If you look on page 323, the BHM Library.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for inviting me here this evening to speak with you. The funding we receive from Beaufort County is crucial to our operations, so thank you very much for your support. And please feel free to attend any of our quarterly trustee meetings for additional information regarding our organization. If you just like to stop by, that would be great. And some of the things that our Beaufort County Libraries provide for our community include public storytimes, local author and speaker visits, database access, job fairs, partnerships with NC Legal Aid for different legal help, outreach and learning kits for special storytimes and for daycares in schools, healthcare information, partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club. We provide copying, faxing, scanning, and printing services. We have newspaper and magazine access, literacy resources for all ages. We deliver homebound book deliveries. We deliver homebound book deliveries, art and craft classes, public computer access, summer reading activities for community members of all ages, and one-on-one technology assistance. So we've asked for an increase because it's been hitting us hard as far as getting different supplies and everything. Everything has gone up in cost, and we would like to say that thank you so much for the one-time funding that you gave to us this past fall. We've seen an increase of people coming in the doors and checking out those books that we were able to purchase with that money, so that's been wonderful. We've had a lot of people come through our doors and say, "These are authors. We haven't read this before. This isn't a bestseller. This is a different type of book, and I love it." So I wanted to thank you for that as well, so we can continue getting those books for all of our community members. We enjoy serving the community, and please help us continue to provide these resources for all of Beaufort County. Are there any questions?
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And please do stop by our trustee meetings. We're completely open to the public, that's anybody, and we'd love to talk to you also.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, page 324 is the Highway 1764 Association. I'll see Mr. Finlayson, but they've requested an additional $5,000 on top of the current funding that the board currently provides to them. Any questions? Moving on to page 325, Citizens on South Side Together. They've requested an additional $1,000 funding above their current $2,000 level funding, and they have some representatives here this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Joe Calhoun. I am the Assistant Director of Costs, Citizens on South Side Together, and today we're requesting $3,000 to finish a walking trail for our recreation center. It is 60% done, and to finish it is about $7,000, and we're requesting $3,000 to help with the completion.
You ready for questions?
Yes, yes, please.
Anyone have a question? John?
Where's it at? Where's the park at?
It's right off of Highway 33 and Stili Town Road.
Before you get to Edward.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we ask for a clarification as well?
Yes.
So, excuse me, we currently have you funded at $2,000 annual recurring funds. What we showed was an additional $1,000 you were asking for, so you meant a total of three?
Yes.
Okay. And would the $1,000 just be a one-time, or would you be requesting that to continue on?
Well, we're hoping that every year we get additional donors, so we got $7,000 to complete, so we're hoping by the end of this year we should be complete.
Okay, so does that mean that this would just be a one-time $1,000?
One-time.
Okay. So we showed that as a recurring cost, but if you'll back that over to show it as just a $1,000 one-time increase, and then they would go back to the $2,000. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On page 326 is Eagles Wings. They've requested $3,000 additional to the current funding that you provide for them, and Emery's here.
I'm getting old, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone. Yes, we've been being recipients of $2,000 each year from the county commissioners, which is wonderful. Thank you. This year, we're asking for a total of $5,000, and this will all go toward our satellite operation. You know, for 25 years, Eagles Wings was here in Washington or Chaco Innity, wherever we were, and it was a one-time, everybody had to come to us at the one location. Well, Beaufort County is a difficult county to get around, especially if you don't have transportation. So five and a half years ago, in October of 2017, we started a satellite program. My board of directors thought I was crazy, but they let me try it, and it's been extremely successful. We do two satellites in Aurora every month for a total of 60 families. We have one satellite in Chaco Innity that serves 24 families on the average, and we do a Hispanic community on Highway 17 at the Alpha and Omega Hispanic Church, and that serves 28 families on the average each month. Each satellite costs Eagles Wings about $12,000. That includes the cost of food, staffing, and transportation. So your $5,000 is not, we're not overly asking for more money than we need. We could certainly use a lot more, but we would love to see it at $5,000 amount coming from the county commissioners. We are serving only the people of Beaufort County. You know, you can have parks and recreation groups up here, but I'll tell you one thing, children are not going to use them if they're hungry, if parents are hungry. If people can't eat, they're not going to have, they're not going to want to go to the library and read, or go to the park and play on the swing. You know, it's a basic, very fundamental thing that we do. All we do is feed the people of Beaufort County, and we qualify them. This is not a free giveaway just because you're there. Our satellites, as well as our location here in Washington, is a very well-run organization. You can come and visit it anytime you want to. I believe Mr. Booth has come, and I'm not sure if Mr. Waters has, but you're always welcome to come and see. We're very transparent in the way we handle this. There's an interview process. We are very strict about it because we're also handling two USDA programs for our people, one of them being a senior program. And these are income-based programs that we have to verify for the USDA. So we're sure that we are serving the neediest people here in Beaufort County. So we ask you to be, continuing to be a partner with us and do this. We had 47 new clients alone just in this month of May, because we just did our monthly reports for the USDA. We're seeing a lot of these people coming because all of those COVID programs ended in March, and so they're not getting extra money for children, they're not getting those extra food stamp dollars on their cards, and they're coming back to us. So these are needed programs, they are needed services, and we ask you to continue your partnership and increase your partnership with us. Any questions?
Questions of Ann. Thank you very much.
I guess you've all had supper, and you're all satisfied. Great, thank you.
No, haven't.
So, Mr. Chairman, the next item would be on page 327, which is the North Carolina Estuaryum, but they've requested to withdraw that application, so if you will skip that one, please. Then moving to page 328, the Zion Shelter is making an additional request. Representatives, I don't see representatives from the Zion Shelter, but you currently fund them in the continuation budget of $10,000 a year. They've requested an additional $2,000. And then these remaining items, 1, 2, 3, 4, the four remaining items are brand-new requests. You've never funded these before, so you may want to ask a little more detail. Oh, the second judicial. Yeah, okay, sorry. So some of these are brand-new. We do show those are new requests, but so you may want to ask a little more probing questions and find out a little more, just because they've not been in front of you before. So the first one is the Safe Harbor Helpline. I think Sally's here to speak to that one. It's an initial request of $3,000.
Good evening, Sally.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you. When people find themselves unexpectedly homeless, they panic. They don't know where to go, they don't know where to get help, you frequently don't have any resources. So they pretty much end up sometimes in an unsafe place, and we find here that sometimes it's in their cars, and sometimes it's a mom with three kids under eight, like we had a couple of months ago, that are living in their car, usually in the Walmart warehouse or, sorry, parking lot. Anyway, it's especially stressful for families to be without any place to be. So Safe Harbor Helpline was started last year as a program of the Beaufort County United Way, and it's a collaboration between the Zion Men's Shelter, Open Door Community Center, Region 12 Coordinated Entry Case Manager, and the United Way. They all have, we all share responsibilities here, and it has two functions. The first function was just come up fairly recently, is an information line. This is a 24/7 phone line. People can call an established number and get help. The first thing they're asking for is just help for resources, where to go if they're homeless, and also they're asking for other resources. So we have a major list of resources that they can do it, and we're familiar with local things. It's up to date with local situations on everything. So when they call that number, sometimes it's just to get help over the phone. We get 25 or 30 calls a month just for that. But those who are literally homeless, we have a case manager that questions them, assesses where they are, assesses what's happened to them in the last little while, and if they are literally homeless, they are placed in a motel. And that's what our funding does. It pays for the motel nights. If we can put them in a local shelter, we do that. So if Open Door has room, they go to the shelter. If the Men's Shelter, Zion Shelter has room, we take them directly to the Men's Shelter. If Community Crossroads has room, we recommend that they go there. But if there are no options, then we put them in a motel until they can be further assessed, and then the Coordinated Entry Manager from Region 12, which is the five counties here, comes in and questions them and finds out what they need, and then we work from there. In 2022, we've only been doing this for a little over a year, year of 2022. We provided temporary shelter for 77 individuals, 26 women, 14 men, and 37 children. They stayed everywhere from one night to 35 nights, and the reason for that is that the affordable housing is short, the shelters are full. So we have to keep them in the motel. We're not going to put them out again until we can find a solution for them. So the stays are longer than expected. When we first started this, we thought, you know, three nights, four nights, give them a chance to get safe a little bit, kind of regroup, and then we'll find a place for them, and that's not always possible. We're finding that that's more often than not possible. So we're requesting the $3,000, which would go for motel expenses. Any questions?
Questions of Ann.
How do they find you?
Well, we've tried posting the number in the laundromats and in the social services and every place we can. We have tried to spread the word through all the agencies, so they find us that way. That's pretty much. And we have, we're linked with 211, so they can recommend us. We're trying to get the word out as much as we can, and every time we meet somebody new or somebody who works with homeless people, we try to do that as well.
You said you had 77 different?
Individuals, yes.
Individuals. Were they, as you say, individuals, or were they families?
We had, there were, the way I counted is that's individuals, but every time it's a family, I give them a number, and if it's an individual by himself or herself, I give them a number. We had 35 family units and, you know, the mix of 35. And actually, because the shelters are full, we've actually housed, gone right from the motel into housing for 14 of those people, because that's usually the shelter's job, is to help them build their skills and then go to, you know, get. We are putting them, if it looks like we don't have a place to put them, we enter them into the HMIS system, so they're part of the homeless system.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ann. I mean, Ann, Sally.
So page 335 is Open Door Community Center. They're asking for some additional funding, and I think also a land request. Is that correct, as we lay down the book?
I'm Beverly Casey. I'm the Treasurer for Open Door Community Center. As you just heard, we do have homeless folks in Beaufort County that desperately need our help. Open Door Community Center provides safe shelter to women and their children that are experiencing homelessness. We don't just take these ladies in, we help assess them. We have a caseworker. We help them find employment. We help them, depending on their needs, if there's medical issues that need to be addressed or resources for housing, of course, is the most important one. So we also registered with the North Carolina Coordinated Entry System so that it can obtain permanent and stable housing. In 2022, we've assisted 22 homeless women and 22 children find stable housing. Since we opened the shelter in 2019, we've serviced 77 women and 46 children. So we're requesting $4,000 in funding to help maintain and operate our facility. So I'd like to share with you a recent success story, just so you get a feel for what we do. Ms. Smith, of course, that's not her name, she was a, she's a mother of four who found herself homeless due to a car accident that led to her loss of a child, and that led to an eviction. She had four children, 16, 14, four, and three, and Ms. Smith has spent multiple nights sleeping in her car by the waterfront. She eventually found a friend that she could stay on their couch in the living room for $200 a month, but she got kicked out. They couldn't support her and her family. Since she's come to Open Door, she's met her financial goals by obtaining permanent employment, she has obtained health insurance, and she's learned how to budget, one of the services that we also help them obtain, and is on the way to finding permanent housing. We have her in our Rapid Re-Housing Case Manager, and she's one step closer to finding a place for home. So our goal is to help these women help themselves and to help them with the resources they need to get permanent affordable housing. So if you guys have any questions?
You're located right next to Bay Leaf Plantation.
We're located right beside my doctor.
Yeah, and Bay Leaf. Questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think also including this, as you'll see on page 337, you actually have a letter from Sally Love regarding Open Door, so I don't know if you want to speak to that. There is a piece of property that's next to y'all that y'all have requested the board consider. As you recall, previously, there were a couple pieces of property there that were under the master lease agreement that the county has with the hospital system. We pulled one of those pieces out because it was the old, it was a clinic, it was one of the clinics, I forget which one it was, hadn't been in use. We actually worked with ECU Health, Viden, at the time, to pull that off the master lease agreement. The property was contributed to the group to start the shelter. They've come back and asked, there's an additional piece of property that's adjacent to that. Y'all are looking to do some expansion, according to the letter, and are looking to see if the county might consider a similar piece if we were able to pull that out of the master lease agreement as well, and you may want to speak to that.
Currently, we have nine beds, so we're very limited to the number of women that we can assist. One of our long-term goals is to expand the facility, and we're currently looking at options for doing that. Of course, that's going to require us to have a larger space, and we have property that we can expand on, but we also need some additional parking, so that will help us with the expansion as well as for parking for the facility.
Brian, Ed has.
Is that a piece of property that's adjoining theirs? So is the request, I missed part of it, is the request that we just talk to ECU Health regarding pulling this property out of that lease agreement? So I think it's two pieces. First, there's the financial ask, and then there's the request if the board would consider doing a similar arrangement like you did before. That's why you have the letter here from Sally. So we rolled all that together. So we rolled all that together as part of, as part of that. We could bring it back to you at a different time if you wanted us to, but we felt like that was a, that was kind of a haul of it together, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Anyone else?
There's something up. Who holds the deed for your place that you're using now?
Open Door Community Center.
So you're asking for a deed to the adjoining property, or are you asking to lease or use the adjoining property?
A deed to the adjoining property, is that like Sally?
We're asking for the deed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Which, which now is in the county's name, and we lease it to ECU Health?
It is under the master lease agreement. It is, is one of the parcels that's under that master lease agreement. There's nothing on it.
Thank you very much, Beverly.
So your next item is on page 341. It's the Second Judicial Recovery Court. I don't see folks from here there. They're requesting $10,000. You'll see in their write-up, they, the Second Judicial District Group is requesting $35,000 in local funding. So they're looking for Beaufort County to participate in that amount at $10,000. They're, says they're pursuing the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration grant, and will use that to work on the multi-county Drug Recovery Court. If you have any questions, we're glad to, to pass those questions on to the Drug Recovery Court, folks. I don't know that I can answer those for you. You have previously funded them in the past. At $10,000, it was a time-limited thing where they came in and asked for some funds, and so now they're back to ask for some additional funds.
But now, is this, is this actually a court sanction under the laws of the state of North Carolina? Or is this just a name that a group is using to assist people?
Actually, District Court Judge Parker is heading this group up.
Is it a volunteer group, or is this mandated by the legislature, or?
No, no, it's not mandated by the legislature. But it is the, it is the judicial group in, in, in the Second Judicial District that is working on this Recovery Court piece. So it is the, it is the elected officials, the elected judicial officials in the Second District who are putting this and trying to move forward. It's not a requirement by the state. It's an, it's an additional service that they're providing.
But they're volunteering to provide this without state funding?
That's correct. That's what I understand. They, they may have some state funding, I don't know, but I don't think the state is a, I don't, I don't know.
I, I went to one of the first meetings they had over in Williamson, or between Washington and Williamson, at Macedonia Church. And basically what the program is, is, is the, the judge gives the person the option of participating in this program or going to jail. This will keep them out of jail if they sign up for this. And they have certain things they have to do every day, and they have to attend certain classes. But it is, is trying to keep them from going to jail, getting that, and reoccurring, doing the same thing again and again.
Is this drugs or is this?
Any offense? It's primarily drugs. I'm not sure whether somebody with alcohol, the last, as far as.
It's drugs as well as alcohol. And most, most of the.
Most of the participants are on probation. This is kind of like a last option for.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic, and I wish the people that are doing this work, it's relentless, disappointing work, because the last person I tried to help that was involved in that program or a very similar program, finally elected to go to prison so they could serve their time, so they could get out and use drugs without being supervised. So the drug, the drug thing is horrible. We really need to be locking up the people that are selling drugs for 20 years without possibility of getting out of jail, and that'll put a stop to this stuff.
Any, any other comments?
So, Mr. Chairman, just to bring your attention on page 342, you'll see their request for funding, and you'll see in the two prior fiscal years, they've received the $10,000 from us, but you'll also see where they've received that federal funding. So they're essentially doing the same thing they requested from you before. They're going to try to match up this local funding with the $200,000 federal funding. That's Sam Segren.
Any other questions? You want to get to the next one, Brian?
Yes, sir. Page 346 is Greenlamp. They are requesting funding of $25,000 for Rapid Rehousing, Homelessness Prevention and Support Services, and they're here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening.
My name is Crystal Gwendo. I'm the Deputy Director for Greenlamp, and this is Angela Bates, and she's the Executive Director for Greenlamp. We are requesting $25,000. But let me preface it by saying that we normally have, we do have the CSBG program located here in Beaufort County. That's a Community Service Block grant. But because of low participation in the, in the census, that federal funding has decreased by 43%. So the federal funding for Beaufort County that we were utilizing has decreased by 43%. So we are asking for assistance with continuing to assist families with not only rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention, but we literally take families from crayons to careers, where we not only give a, we don't give a hand out, we give a hand up. So individuals who are in need of assistance not only get the assistance that they need, but we find out what barriers they have, and we try to mitigate these barriers. Whether it be childcare so they can go to work, whether it be education so they can get a better paying job. So if a family is homeless because of one particular incident, right, then we can assist them with our case managers how to mitigate that and prevent it from happening again. So this is a recurrence request, again, because these are fundings that we normally have, and we normally utilize it in Beaufort County. But again, it's, those fundings are directly tied to the census participation. And in 2021, the participation was extremely low, so the funding for that was cut. We currently also run the 9/11 Day of Service in Beaufort County. And what that program does, we try to rally about 300 volunteers to assist with any natural or man-made disasters. We also honor individuals who stood up because of 9/11 to serve the country, and we are the only program in the state of North Carolina to have that. And we're happy to say that Beaufort County is one of our servicing counties that we use. So, I'm sorry, my voice is going. But we are requesting this assistance to continuously assist individuals and families in the county with the needs. And we do work with DSS. So if DSS has a family that's in need and they cannot support, we tag team, we do tag team with Beaufort Community College, with WIOA programs, so the Workforce Innovative Act. So again, if this individual needs assistance with education, if education is a barrier, we work with the school and pay for their schooling. So education is no longer a barrier for them to become self-sufficient.
And if I may, good evening. If I may present you with some statistics. We have operated the program here for the last seven years. And in the 22, 23 year, of course, that was the year of all the COVID funding. So we were able to serve 574 individuals here in Beaufort County. A lot of that stemmed from rental assistance, utility assistance, to food assistance, even shoes, and, and other types of needed assistance. So we did serve 574 people. Out of that, we had 149 senior adults out of the 574. And like the other nonprofits, like Ms. Sally had said, our folks, when they come to us, they do an intake form. And we verify their income, we have to verify their income because we receive funding, federal funds passed through North Carolina DHHS. But we have to verify their income, the number in their household, as well as we gain their demographics, so that we do know what areas, even in Beaufort County, the areas where they live, whether it be in Washington, Chalkillity, Bellhaven, Bath, Aurora, Antigo, wherever. So then we're able to see the demographics, where the folks are coming to us from. And this past year, we had $230,000 in funds that we spent here in Beaufort County. That was not including the monies that, that we could have spent buying food, but we worked with the food bank. So we were able to do giveaways from the food bank. We were also able to partner with the North Carolina Community Action Association and have goods and serve, goods donated to us, of which we, we gave out. And as Ms. Gwendo had said, the, we do with the 9/11 Day of Service program, we also assisted Design Shelter and Open Door Community Center with hygiene goods and non-perishable food. So we do partner with as many other nonprofits and other agencies in the areas as possible.
John?
What services do you provide that Open Door and Zion doesn't?
Our Community Services Block grant, which we do partner with them, when a family, an individual family comes to us and they're enrolled in our CSBG program, they receive everything from intensive case management. We do resource and referral, like Ms. Gwendo said, if they are needing additional education, we fund the cost of that education in partnership with the community college. If they need childcare, we either work to help them get into the Head Start, Early Head Start program, or we also pay for the childcare. If the mother is, is working or in school, whatever the needs may be, we provide gas, transportation for them to get to school or to get to work. We do whatever we need to do to mitigate those barriers so they can get a job, get back into the community, and start giving back.
So a lot of your clients are not homeless, not homeless, right?
Right. Some are.
Not all of them.
Right. Some are, but the majority of our families are just impoverished and may have fallen on hard times and come to us, and we assist as best we can.
So if you look on the proposal, it says Rapid Rehousing and Homelessness Prevention. So focusing on that homelessness prevention portion, because a lot of people are, they're one paycheck away from being homeless.
You good, John?
Yep.
Any, any other question? Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that is on our list, the last of your outside agencies who are asking for additional funds now. And I don't want to call him out, but I do see, I do see in the back of the room, the Boys and Girls Club Executive Director, Mark Holtzman, who you, who you do fund the Boys and Girls Club. I'm not sure if you were just here to see things that were going on, or whether we missed something in an additional request. I didn't want you to come this way and not be able to speak if you wanted to.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mark Holtzman, I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plain, which serves right here in Beaufort County. And I'm with Kimberly Reeves. Kimberly's our Chief Operating Officer. We're not here to ask, we just came to say thank you and wanted to just sit in, hear some of the conversation going on, certainly take any questions if you have. You're great supporters of our clubs here in Washington and over in, in Bellhaven. And we're serving currently 239 children, our members, and just around 100 every single day coming through our doors.
You guys help us fund what we call Formula for Impact, and that helps young people 6 to 18 with character and leadership development, healthy lifestyles, as well as academic success. Because of partnerships like you all, I was listening to some of the other community partners talking about childcare and resources for young people. We do have a summer camp starting on June the 12th until August the 11th. And for our young people in Beaufort County, there are no fees. And we are able to use resources like the ones that you guys provide to be able to do that. We're in seven counties. Not every county, we're able to say that this summer. Most of our counties have a $100 fee for the summer camp, but Beaufort County does not have any fees.
So we're open. If anybody wants to, knows of anybody that needs our, who could help out through the summer, eight weeks, nine and a half, 10 hours a day. We'll be serving kids all summer long, so we still have openings if anybody's interested or knows of somebody who can, who can help out.
Any, anyone have a question? John?
I just want to say thank you for the job that you're doing in Washington, Beaufort County Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
John?
Can you help me understand what the metrics are that you use to gauge your outcomes? What you're looking to do?
Yes. So we are a part of a national brand, Boys and Girls Club of America. We're a chartered organization. And so one of the things, and they do many things really well, is providing us with the metrics of, of measurement, whether it's surveys, pre and post tests, things of that nature. And so probably the largest one is called the National Youth Outcomes Initiative. And every spring, our young people take a survey with a series of questions that they ask that talk about their club experience. Based on the outcome of those surveys, it kind of guides us how we want to be able to offer programming for the following year. And we also do, we collect report cards, we have memorandums of understanding with all of our school systems, including Beaufort County. And we work with teachers and principals and school officials to make sure that we are linked with the school day and our academic programs and tutoring services that we offer
Just second what Ed said. Thank you for what you do in Bellhaven and here in Washington. And thank you for your previous service.
Thank you. This is, it's a joy. I get to work with a great team, and we call it the movement, and they're, they're making, we're all making a difference out there. So appreciate the partnership, and we'll keep reporting back to you, and happy to come back and give me update anytime we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, on page 351 is the Water Fund. As you're aware, we do general fund, and we have the two enterprise funds. So we've, or we've already hit on the Water Fund piece, that's the pay study, the employee dental, and the 401K piece. Those are the actual numbers that would be associated with the Water Fund, because we have employees who are assigned to the Water Fund. And so you've essentially, we've essentially hit that one. If you go to page 355, this is the Solid Waste Fund, is another enterprise fund you have. And the top three, the pay implementation, the dental plan, and the 401K, excuse me, have already been covered as well. You have those numbers out to the side. There are three additional ones, I think Wes is going to handle those. On page 359 is the Solid Waste Cleanup Project, and then the additional ones that he'll go through with you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm bringing up the rear, so I'm here for as long as you need me, but I'll try to keep it short. We've got two items that are similar in title, but different in scope, so I'll, I'll try to make clear what we're talking about here. Solid Waste Cleanup Projects. There's been, as you all are aware, there's a lot of discussion about sites where there's been illegal dumping, and how can we work to correct that. What this, this expansion would do would essentially be set up a fund for potential cleanup projects to, to go in, and this will be on private property, to go in and clean up these problem dump sites that would, hopefully, if they're cleaned up, it would become less of a problem down the road. I think we can all pretty much agree that, you know, if somebody sees a bag of trash sitting there, they're more likely to say, well, I can put my bag of trash there beside that one. Well, if we get rid of the dump, hopefully the, the problem starts to go away. So again, this, this expansion would be for cleaning up on private property. We would contract with service providers as needed. It's possible that maybe we could recoup some of the costs from property owners or grant funding, but that's totally up in the air, and we can't really.
Why can't we place a lien on the property?
I don't know the legality of that. I'm thinking that may be an option. I'm not.
I think the county attorney should look into that as a part of this project. I don't, I don't believe in going out and cleaning up people's property for free of charge. I mean, most of those places that I've seen that happen, then people just go back and keep dumping. So I think if you can put a lien on the property, it enhances the property owner to try to keep the property clean.
And we're certainly willing to. And we're certainly willing to explore any options to recover any of these calls.
Could you have the county attorney look into that before we meet again, so we can have an opinion?
I think we probably can.
All right. Yes?
When you say cleaning up private property, explain that a little closer. I mean, the property has been, or the controversy in this county is that I don't, Magnolia School Road?
So let's take that for example, say. That's probably one of our more common sites that we get calls about.
Well, if that's the case, the property owner did not create that problem. So why would you put a lien, if we can, put a lien on the person that somebody else dumped their trash on their property?
I think you can look at that as also the county did not create that problem. So, you know, we're taking the initiative to help clean that up, to help prevent that at other places as well. But to take that for example, that is one of our more problematic sites. You know, there is roadside cleanup, but there's also the property in the curve that's a major issue where it's been dumped for, hazard to guess, years, based on what I've seen out there. And without any cleanup, it just becomes an opportunity for somebody else to then dump their trash there beside the other.
Well, now, that property that you're talking about on Magnolia Shores Road is owned by about seven or eight people, as nearly as I can determine, and they really don't care. All they want to do is sell it and spend the money. So tell me why we wouldn't put a lien on a situation where the county is spending public money on private property? I think there's some laws against that.
There's no, you don't just put a lien on somebody's property. You've got to grant a proceeding. You've got to sue them because they're violating the law. Then you get a judgment lien. Then you go and invoice.
So the answer is, yes, we can put a lien on the property.
If you've got laws that prohibit whatever is being done, answer yes.
Yeah, well, there's some laws in the general statute that provide counties can clean up things on private property and put liens on them. Plus, if we're looking at this ordinance that we're talking about, there's some provisions in that that will provide for the same thing. I'm totally opposed to gratis going out and cleaning up property, because the property owner has absolutely no initiative to do anything to keep and protect his property. Whereas if a lien is put on it, then he would probably want to keep that property cleaned up. So I'm definitely going to vote against this unless we can put, unless the provision is that we can put a lien on any property we spend money on. And I'll tell you another thing, that particular property, there's bags of trash out there. It would take, if we hire this person that you're going to talk about in a minute, it would take him about 15 minutes to gather the evidence that was needed to bring a case and have this stuff cleaned up by the perpetrators of the action, so that the property owner doesn't have a burden. So there's a lot of moving parts here.
That was my line of thinking, was if you have all these bags of trash, why not find out who the owner of the trash is and attach the cost to the owner of the trash? To me, that sounds more reasonable. I mean, because when they dumped that trash, then they knew exactly what they were doing. They knew they were violating the law, so make them pay the cost.
We've done that. I'll dispute the 15 minutes, because I've done it myself. It took a couple of hours to go up and down that stretcher hood and pull names from. But we've done that. We've sent letters about cleaning up the trash. I think we saw marginal correction of that at best. I think very shortly after we sent the letters, DOT did a sweep. So we may have gotten some benefit by timing, or the other people got some benefit by timing, and...
Well, my line of thinking is this, do a set amount per bag of trash. I don't care whether it's $10 or $20 a bag. I mean, you can, you can run the numbers up pretty good. I mean, because basically, I mean, the dumpster, the dump site is not that far away, just because you waited till after it was closed to come. And so now you don't want to take it back home? That's just as bad as the guy who just ate at Bojangles in the side. He's going home, but I'm going to throw it out the window. It's just as bad.
I agree. That's if it's in a bag. The time I went there, it was everywhere, bags disintegrated. I will say, you know, we brought this as an expansion item based on comments we have heard, thinking that it was the desire of the board to clean up some properties. We didn't know if this was the best way to pursue this, but we brought this at a certain point, see where we can get to.
John's got a question.
Wes, I would suggest that we hold on all of this until after we get the document to talk about.
The proposed ordinance, you mean?
The ordinance. I mean, this, all of these are tied to that. And there's, and there isn't any enforcement in that ordinance. So that's got to be, that's got to be brought out and flushed out, too.
The ordinance is still a document in process.
I understand.
We have not presented a penalty section. We're still working on that.
I understand.
So the point of that was to present that part for you all to read the guts of the ordinance before we get into the next section of what we're enforcing and how we're going to enforce that.
Yeah, but I think it's premature then to be talking about hiring a part-time enforcement officer.
The anticipation was, we're going to have this ordinance ready, roll out within the next budget year, but long before the end of the budget year, and hoping to have that position potentially approved. We can certainly bring it back later if that's the desire of the board, but we just thought that was a good...
Well, you can amend the budget ordinance to include the additional employee. I agree with John, it's all in sort of one ball of wax, and we need to take it all up at one time. But I did notice that you do have provisions for attaching liens on property under certain conditions for cleanup. I haven't read the proposed ordinance close enough to see if that applies to private property or not, but if it doesn't, it should.
If that's the general consensus, I would like to address item number two separately, because we do kind of view that out of the purview of the ordinance that's being proposed.
Ms. Chairman, if I may, real quick, and Wes and Kristen are going to be here while, and I apologize, the representatives from the Humane Society are here, and they were here to give you an update on their program that you funded last year. We missed that. Would it be appropriate for them to go ahead, since our staff are here?
Yes.
If we could let them go ahead and speak to you just briefly?
Yes.
Thank you, Wes.
I knew they were enjoying us talking about solid waste. I could tell by the expression. Good evening, good evening.
I gave you in writing our information. You were generous to give us money last year, and now you know how we spent it. And we just appreciate having a repeat for this year to do the same thing. And our numbers are on the page. All in all, we have worked this program for 28 months. And in 28 months, we've been able to spay or neuter 2,451 cats.
Do that number again.
2,451. And that's through the month of April. I do not have May as yet. If you can imagine any one of those cats even having as few as two or three kittens, just imagine what the county would look like. It's like, we really think this is a good program, and we hope you will continue to support us.
Thank you very much.
And Dr. Paffenberg, if you'd...
Yeah, just to, I mean, you've already seen the evidence. I think Chris kind of made our point for us, that it's reducing the number of cats going into the shelter, and that's our goal. This program is going so well for us, I will put in a plug for what they were saying, too. This does address cats. We do, just to remind you, we do help to spay and neuter every animal that leaves the shelter also. So this is kind of a no-brainer. This is one of those things that cuts down on demands on your county shelter, the number of employee hours that they would be putting in. But I think what they're asking for, just to kind of go back to that 10,000 that they were asking for, was to address some of the dogs that aren't falling under the animals that are adopted. You've got the best director out there you've ever had, I will tell you that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, with, you know, and also the way that she works with the emergency management. I mean, it's the, in the 30-some years that I've been here, it's the best group. And she is definitely, Melanie's definitely focused on spay-neuter, which again reduces the workload. Compared to other counties, you just, you don't know, you tend to know how good you have it. Her, what they were asking for would be to fund some animals that they see that are very much in need. They see some of these situations, and they're going, "Why are we taking these puppies? You know, can we just spay the mom or, you know, neuter this dad that's, you know, running loose?" And I could put in a plug for their request also. But thank you for what you've done to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wes?
I'd like to take a look from Wes right now. The three items that are included in the expansion items, the reason they are included in the budget is because obviously these are issues that we've dealt with for many months and trying to work towards a resolution on that. Because the budget is when we're discussing expenses, though we're also discussing revenues. So these items are here so that if you think this is something that you want to do, which all three of these items are items that have been discussed by the full board previously, and at one point, at least one of you have been in favor of doing this, this is giving you the expenses. So budget time is when you're thinking about the revenues. So how do we get the revenues in order to cover these expenses and not just looking at taking money from the fund balance without any revenues coming in? So again, that's the timing of these being included in fiscal year 24 budget.
So what you're saying, you would like for us to give serious consideration tomorrow night in any items that we want to put in there?
Yes, sir. If the board has a consensus, if you think that you're going to do something, again, the additional trash on the roadway and on private property as well, it's been discussed over and over again. If we're looking to address those issues and correct those issues, then funds are needed for that, because we do not have funds for that, for those services in our current operating budget. So please take a serious consideration of that. And again, as Wes said, the first one is, you know, changing, providing a totally new service, which would be going onto private property and performing a service. Again, there's been much discussion about that, both pros and cons, so some direction is going to be given on that. The rest?
So I would like to address the second item separately, if that's okay. I understand the consensus on the other two items. We are kind of waiting on the ordinance. The periodic roadside cleanup, as probably most of you all are aware, the Department of Transportation does litter sweeps two times a year. They do April and September. Outside of these times, when we get calls from residents saying there's bags of trash in the ditch or whatever, they're handled more on an as-needed basis. If we call DOT, if they are swamped with work, then there's a delay in their response time. Also, larger-scale projects, like the Magnolia School Road right-of-way, is, provides an even greater challenge to their crews, just based on the time it takes to go out there and clean up the roadside. We understand that roadside litter occurs throughout the county. US highways, North Carolina highways, secondary roads everywhere. We know that's a problem everywhere. But areas near our solid waste collection sites do tend to be a little bit more problematic. So to help maintain cleaner road sides, what we are proposing is twice a year, I don't know what the correct word is, but between the DOT litter sweeps in April and September, so July and December, I think it works out to be, is we would like to go in and do a contracted cleanup, half a mile on either side of our collection sites. So that section of right-of-way, both sides of the road, whatever's getting blown out of trucks as they're coming in and out of their, out of the collection sites, or, you know, it's closed, I'm just going to leave my bag of trash right here in the ditch. We're trying to take care of that before it becomes a bigger problem. So this $15,000 would be for the two cleanups, I think, 10 sites cleaned up twice a year.
For 15,000?
Yes.
Half a mile?
Yes, half a mile on either side of site, so a mile total of road, right-of-way.
I'm willing to think about it, but I think if you put in that ordinance that you need to cover, your load is going to take care of a lot of it. Not just the commercial carriers, I'm talking about private individuals. Because there are a lot of people that go down the road and half the trash doesn't get to the site.
It must be on the north side, because I don't see it on the south side.
I see it on the south side.
Maybe you're going to a different place.
That's exactly right. You got anything else?
That's it, unless y'all have any questions.
We can debate this subject until midnight, I can tell you that. But I hear you loud and clear, is that we need to probably put some number and try to do something. And we can always come back and amend it.
And if we try it one year and we don't see a difference?
Yeah.
You're right, dumping trash is contagious, because if there's a bag sitting on the side of the road, somebody will come along and put two bags.
Right. That grows to five and 10.
Sure.
I like Chairman Roach.
Thank you, Wes. Brian?
So Ms. Chairman, Mr. Board, that's the end of the service expansion piece. Certainly, there are items for you to consider if you'd like to. And then tomorrow night is, what we've listed is your finalization of the budget. Now, again, that's up to the board, how far you get and how much you want to get. We do have a public hearing scheduled on the budget for the June 5 meeting, your regular meeting. We will have that public hearing regardless, simply because it's for the public to comment on the budget. So our hope would be, though, that you would have the information you would need to make a decision tomorrow night on where you want us to be on the budget. And that would give us the opportunity to get that budget ordinance put in place and drafted into you for your consideration at the June 5 meeting. If you don't do that, then we certainly can call, a special call meeting the next Monday, which is what we showed on your schedule. But if there's anything that you need from us between now and then, please let us know. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would encourage you, if you have anything that you need further information on, to send Brian and Anita a email tomorrow, so hopefully they can have it available.
With the folks that came tonight, do we have a spreadsheet of everybody in a line that we can kind of go by and check and X and...
So we do. So if you look in the back of your book, under the service expansion pieces, so starting on page 289, you'll see that list of service expansions. Now, again, those are only ones that ask for additional money. Now, if you want to look at outside agencies, we'll go to the outside agency page, and you can look specifically at those. But these are additions or new requests for funding, so. And we have those listed by general fund, solid waste, and water fund, since they're two separate entities, or enterprise funds.
That's exactly what I asked. I should have looked.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to take a recess until tomorrow night at 5:00. So we will, so we'll see you tomorrow night. Thank you.